Okay, if there are no errors or omissions, Counselor Hens and Counselor is going to second, all in favor. That's carried, thank you. Remind members of disclosure to pecuniary interest and the general nature thereof. I'm seeing none, which brings us to section four, presenting petitions, presentations and delegations. This morning, I'm pleased to welcome Bonnie Rowe, representing the Elder Abuse Elgin, the Elder Abuse Elgin Presentation. Good morning, Bonnie.
Good morning, and thank you for this opportunity to talk to you about a strategy to end elder abuse in Elgin County. So yes, I am Bonnie Rowe, and I am a volunteer with Elder Abuse Elgin. I have been working with the organization for over twenty-five years. I started out as a representative from the employer. I worked at the West Elgin Community Health Center for a number of years. And then when I retired, I continued on as a senior volunteer. So with me, I want to just introduce some supporters from Elder Abuse Elgin. We have Laura Moon, who is currently our vice chair of Elder Abuse Elgin. And behind her, Sharon Node, who is a senior volunteer like myself. We're just so fortunate to have quite a number of senior volunteers that help us with our strategies. And Toby Maniaco is the committee coordinator, and I'll talk a little bit about that position in a few minutes. And we're happy to have Michelle Harris from the county, who is also a member of Elder Abuse Elgin. I think I've hit everyone. Obviously, our committee. Oh shoot, that's my phone. Hang on a minute. Wants my fingerprint. So sorry about that. So obviously, our committee feels very strongly about the work we're doing here and about the reason that we're here today. And it, and that reason is to present to you Future Us, a roadmap to elder abuse prevention. And last year, we visited Warden French and presented her with a copy of this document. And we promised to come back at that time to speak to the full council. So on the next slide, this is really what we're hoping to talk about today within our allotted timeframe, so I will move quickly, beginning with a basic description of what elder abuse looks like in Elgin County. Who Elder Abuse Elgin is, the roadmap to elder abuse prevention, and how municipalities can help. So the definition of elder abuse, based on the World Health Organization definition, is a single or repeated act or lack of appropriate action, occurs within any relationship where there's an expectation of trust, and it causes harm or distress to an older adult. So stressing that it's either an action or a lack of action, so that lack of action we call neglect. It occurs where there's a relationship of trust, so a family, a friend, a neighbor, a care provider. And it causes distress or harm. So you've all heard about scams, and a scam is where you get a call or somebody knocks on your door. That is not really included in elder abuse, in the elder abuse definition, because this is a stranger that's coming to you. So it's, it's certainly an issue that is problematic for many seniors. And we do work closely with our OPP and our city police in addressing scams, but it isn't really what the definition of elder abuse is about. So the forms of elder abuse are listed there, physical, sexual, emotional, financial, violation of rights and freedoms, neglect, and systemic violence. I'm not going to be able to give you a full definition of those. But in Elgin County, we see seniors whose abusers have taken money or property, have taken over their home or their bank accounts for the abuser's use. We've seen seniors neglected to the point where they have no food in their home, where they're isolated from their family and their social networks. And we have seen seniors who are physically abused, and nearly always there is emotional abuse, so things like threats to harm, I'm going to put you in a home, you'll never see your grandchildren again. Those are just some of the examples that we see of cases in Elgin County. So the prevalence, ten percent of older adults experience abuse or neglect. So based on our last census data, that means that in the county of Elgin, including the city, there are three thousand, three hundred seniors at any point being abused. So about half of those are in the city and about half in the county roughly, so that gives you a sense of what's happening out there. But elder abuse is extremely under-reported for a number of reasons. So fear of their abuser will prevent someone from reporting, or they don't know who could help them. Or they fear losing their home or contact with their family. Those are a few of the reasons why seniors will just put up with it. So those numbers are likely much higher. And in the next fifteen years, the number of seniors in our area will increase by sixty-eight percent. So we feel that the time to do something to help is now. So Elder Abuse Elgin, who are we? We are a nonprofit group committed to addressing issues of elder abuse in Elgin County through education, advocacy, and liaison with community resources. We've been functioning in Elgin County for over thirty-five years. We envision an Elgin County where seniors have a strong voice, feel safe, and respected. And that's the next slide. Our goals to reach that vision are to mobilize the community. We communicate with local partners who have dealings with seniors. And the next slide, when we get to it, will show some of those partners. We communicate with other networks around the province, including the Ontario Network for the Prevention of Elder Abuse. And we communicate with seniors directly and with the general public. We advocate for improved services for seniors being abused. We offer a communication, or a rather, a case consultation process. I guess that's hidden underneath the words, but so that case consultation process brings together various people that have skill to address specific issues. And we might speak with a senior themselves or a family member who's got a concern, or it might be a frontline worker who has run into an issue that they can't address themselves and are looking for ideas. And unfortunately, a lot of our time is spent applying for grants and looking for donations, and that takes a lot of volunteer time. We receive no regular funding from any government or non-government organization. We've really been quite successful in receiving grant funds, and we've carried out some really good public education and awareness campaigns. And also, we're one of the few networks that have established a membership fee. And as, and many of our members are able to donate to a membership fee every year, as well as many of our senior volunteers donate every year to to our organization. So that funding is able to keep us just afloat with coordinating or hiring our coordinator, Toby, at the present time. And she just works a few hours a month to try to help our organization from burning out. And because we have no stable funding, we've experienced member burnout. That has weakened our community outreach. And at times, our organization has been inactive because no one will take the lead. So that is, it's an issue, and we'll talk a bit about that. So on the next slide, our community outreach, so these are the things that we, how we carry out our goals. Our network meets every four times a year to discuss current projects that are underway, things that our partners are seeing out in the community, and we try to figure out what we have the resources to address. As previously mentioned, we offer the case consultation with advice given for specific issues, and that is a confidential case consultation. And on the next slide, we promote the Senior Safety Line, which is a twenty-four-seven safety line that is coordinated in, through St. Thomas, and it is available in over two hundred languages. I just want to point out that that safety line has been going for a few years. It is sometimes funded, sometimes not, through the province. And since COVID, the calls to that safety line have increased by two hundred and fifty percent. We also offer educational events to various organizations, seniors groups, whoever we can reach with our educational materials. So the next slide talks about who our partners are, and you can see that we do have a really good representation from healthcare, social services, law enforcement, and as I mentioned, we're very lucky to have half a dozen seniors that are able to carry out a lot of the public strategies. And we're really pleased to have the Elgin County Homes representative. Southwest Public Health is what is one of our members that have helped from time to time over the years, and the OPP. We would appreciate having a municipal representation, either staff or counselors, just to, as an opportunity to just learn what we're trying to do and, and our struggles. But we do appreciate the support that the county has given over the years. We certainly appreciate receiving a community grant a couple of years ago, and we carried out a, an educational strategy at the seniors picnic, where we delivered hundreds of packages of materials to seniors. And we do appreciate the flag raising event that we had last year, which we were fortunate to have on a council day and had a great turnout of counselors and staff, so that was, that was great. So let's talk about the Future Us roadmap, and this is a a roadmap to elder abuse prevention in Canada. The title kind of acknowledges that we're all going to be seniors someday, if we're not already, so that's the Future Us. And there are opportunities right now to promote positive change. So this pan-Canadian document was created last year by a collaborative of experts and advisors, and it was created under the leadership of the Canadian Network for the Prevention of Elder Abuse. And I want to note that Elder Abuse Elgin was part of a work group that fed information into this document. And so we heartily endorse the recommendations in this roadmap. And I did throw up our logo onto that slide, just to let you know that this is one of the things that we feel is really important. The little wording on the side says, "Take a second look." So the website for Future Us is listed there, and we encourage everybody to have a read of this comprehensive document, if you haven't had a chance already. It really gives a clear state of the current situation with elder abuse across Canada, and how ageist attitudes and systems create inequities for seniors that allow abuse to occur. And then it goes on on the next slide to highlight ways that everyone can help. So the document has sections for everyone to do something to help elder abuse. Citizens, organizations, communities, researchers, governments, politicians, and bureaucrats. And because of my time limit today, I'm going to focus specifically on how governments can help. But I do encourage you to have a look at the important recommendations for politicians and bureaucrats. So on the next slide, Future Us recommends that all levels of government can recognize elder abuse as a priority issue and establish a strategy to deal with it. So federal governments can endorse Future Us and fund the National Elder Abuse Network, so that's the Canadian Network for the Prevention of Elder Abuse. And they are in the same situation as the Ontario Network, very iffy funding at any given time, so really difficult to keep staff working on projects. And the federal government can financially incent the provinces and territories to establish networks. So then the provincial governments can recognize elder abuse as a priority and fund the provincial networks. So for Ontario, that's the Ontario Network for the Prevention of Elder Abuse, and, and also the Senior Safety Line. And then they can incent municipalities to establish local prevention networks. And there are a number of networks across Ontario. The number goes up and down based on how much struggle they have to keep those networks going, just like Elder Abuse Elgin. But there, probably half of the regions in Ontario do not have currently any kind of elder abuse network. So then, the municipalities can recognize elder abuse as a priority issue in your community and establish and financially sustain a local network who will carry out the community engagement to deliver education and training on elder abuse in the community. So Future Us has five-year aspirational goals, and we endorse those goals. We've seen ideas come and go over the twenty-five years that I've been with the organization. And this roadmap has really laid out what we think is a viable option. That elder abuse is recognized as a priority issue in every province and territory with a strategy. That elder abuse prevention networks are established and funded in a stable manner at local, provincial, and national levels. And that ongoing public education is delivered through local elder abuse networks. So what can you do to help? We have recently presented this to the City of St. Thomas, and the list was exactly the same for them. You can endorse the Future Us roadmap, make elder abuse prevention a priority in the city and the county. And you can work with your provincial and federal governments, if that is possible, but not necessary. But certainly, if you work with the City of St. Thomas, you could fund our local network on a stable basis. So the details of that funding strategy are in the Future Us roadmap on page twenty-five. And I encourage you to have a look at that. It's not an outlandish ask. So on behalf of the three thousand, three hundred seniors who are currently being abused right now in the county of Elgin, I want to thank you for your time today and ask you to give some thought to how you can help. We're available to meet with you at any time to discuss this strategy. And I'd be glad to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Bonnie, for that presentation. It's very educational. Does anyone have any questions for Bonnie at this time? Counselor Cookett.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. It's through you to Bonnie. Bonnie, you, you paint a bleak picture, I guess, of the support for the organization and the funding for the organization. You do list a number of community partners. What, what do the community partners do for your organization in terms of support?
Well, many of them will attend our meetings quarterly. Some are able to help with the various outreach strategies that we carry out. So they may attend, say, our seniors picnic in the fall or the summer last year, greeting seniors and handing out materials and things like that. Unfortunately, many of those organizations have, you know, their own huge mandate, and so their time, because it's not a mandatory government requirement, like some other strategies that the government carries out, and so, you know, their ability to help wanes and strengthens based on their own workload. Our meetings are sometimes very interesting when, when those organizations will bring a case to us to say, "This is something I've run into recently. These were the things I was able to do, but, you know, I really did not feel as though we addressed the full issue," and that is very common with elder abuse. There will be many factors that, that come into play with a case. And many organizations are only able to address the one specific category that meets with their, with their work mandate, and so there are people that fall through the cracks. There's no question about it. It's happened for years, and it continues to happen, and, and we have some, some ideas to address that. But at this particular time, we're, we're just trying to present the idea that this network that has come and gone, but has been probably in this, in the southwest region, we're one of the stronger networks. And, and that has been purely from the dedication of a few people keeping it, keeping it alive.
Do a follow-up, Mr. Warden. So basically, the organization provide moral support? They don't provide financial support?
Well, as I mentioned, we do have a membership fee, so many of the organizations, such as the County of Elgin, have been able to pay a hundred dollars a year for that membership fee, and that, those funds, you know, a thousand dollars over each year is able to keep Toby and whatever coordinator we have working for our organization.
All right, thank you. You answered my question about membership fees. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Warden. It's through to Bonnie. Very interesting presentation.
Thank you.
You got the number of thirty-three hundred being abused. How do you get that information? There's that many. Is that an estimate, or is it actual, or I just don't know where you get that?
It's an estimate, but it's based on what our, our census is in the county of Elgin. At the last census time, they give a breakdown of all the different age groups, and so I looked at all of the seniors from age fifty-five plus and multiplied it by ten percent, which is, which is the percentage that has been established for the last number of years, based on current research for, for reported elder abuse, so. It's probably much higher, but we will probably never know the real, real number, just because of those reasons that I mentioned of why people don't report.
Yeah, good information. Good to be out there. Maybe more people reported that they know about this group, so.
Yeah, and, and it's unfortunate, but this group, we, we don't have a, like, we're, we're not a, an established nonprofit or a charitable organization. We don't have any resources behind us to, to hire a, someone who can actually work with a client. We, we just, we're a network of volunteers, basically, so. So we can refer people, but we can't handle cases directly, and that's what's needed, is someone that has the mandate and the time to spend time to, to, to establish a relationship with a senior and work with them to see how they can change their current situation, and, and it takes time.
Any additional questions? Counselor Noble.
Through you, Mr. Warden. I'd like to thank Bonnie for her dedication over twenty-five years to this. That's, it's very important work, and the community appreciates that.
Thank you. Now that I'm a senior, it's even more important.
Okay, if there are no additional questions, we'll go with the motion.
Be it resolved that the presentation from Elder Abuse Elgin be received and filed?
Do we have a mover and secondor flat? Counselor Cookett will move. Counselor Whitner will second. All in favor? And that is carried. Thank you.
Thank you again.
Okay, now we'll move into Committee of the Whole.
Be it resolved that we do now move into Committee of the Whole?
Mover and secondor, please. Deputy Warden Jones, Counselor Noble, will second. All in favor? That's carried. Section six, reports of council outside boards and staff, six-one, manager of museum and archives, the Elgin County Museum, twenty-twenty-three annual report. Morning, Mike.
Thank you, Warden, and good morning. I'm pleased to be able to make this report on behalf of Counselors Giger and Hens and the members of our museum advisory committee. I'm happy to report that attendance at the Heritage Center has returned to pre-pandemic levels. We're expecting to see about three thousand visitors by the end of the year. These numbers came largely as a result of the public's response to our cycling exhibit, a show that covered roughly the first thirty years of cycling history through accessories, illustrations, and about sixteen examples of early cycles. It not only brought in good numbers, it brought in new visitors that had never been to the Heritage Center, as well as quite a number of visitors from further away. I would say anywhere between Hamilton and Windsor, we saw people coming to the museum this year. This was thanks largely to pretty extensive media coverage. We got an article in the Globe and Mail, and we had an interview with Rick Wolf, our lender, on the CBC program Fresh Air, which goes out across the province. Many of our visitors mentioned the fact that they'd heard about it from those two sources. We opened on Family Day, and the show gave a boost to our normal numbers of about seventy for Family Day and put it over, just over a hundred for that day, which is always our best day. I think it probably helps that there's not much going on in February down here, but when visitors do come in, they find there's always activities focused around the theme of the show for kids. Thanks mainly to our museum assistant, Ally Shelley. The exhibit also provided a basis for the organization of event around the whistle-stop cycling route that follows Sunset Drive from St. Thomas to Port Stanley. We organized this in partnership with the Railway City Cycling Club, as well as Tourism and Library Services in St. Thomas and our own library and tourism staff here. The day offered displays from a number of cycling shops, refreshments, small jazz band, and even a presentation from the OPP. The two library services and the museum contributed a number of crafts. The archives set up their green screen photo booth, which was quite popular. The museum contributed a guide to historic sites along the route that was provided in both print form and online. The event saw a good turnout, just short of a hundred and thirty, from all over the place. Many actually rode their bikes to the site. This was the second year for this event. The first one was the year, last year or the year before, in St. Thomas, and it will be going back to St. Thomas next year, and we will be participating with our library and tourism services to help organize that. The bike show also brought a record number of book tours to the Heritage Center, including a visit from a Kiwanis Club. Cycling has been replaced with a small exhibit on Port Stanley, which is celebrating the two-hundredth anniversary of its naming next year. And on the other wall, there's a small selection from our permanent collection on the development of the county and its municipalities. This was also the best year we've ever had for school visits. We had eleven classes from ten schools. They're listed on the attendance form that's part of the report, and as you can see, they're from all over the county, as well as St. Thomas and the City of London. Students receive a full day of activities related to the medieval world, staffed entirely by volunteer instructors, which is all coordinated by Ally. Some of our volunteers, in fact, have been with us for the whole five years we've been running this program. And we certainly couldn't do it without them. We also ran a small number of other programs. We also ran a small number of other programs, mainly talks with pretty good success. Uh, we partnered with the Elgin County Historical Society uh this year. One of the talks they provided was an interesting talk uh from two folks on what you found in the kitchens during World War Two. And I remember the, the, they brought some samples. I remember the Canadian more cake was pretty good, but I would stay away from the carrot fudge. It's not that good. We've almost completed uh the work itemized in the Bushelby Quest Agreement. Uh, one final mural is just being completed now by artists at the Oneida Language and Cultural Center at Oneida Nation, the Thames. The mural depicts the route followed by those members of the Oneida Nation that came to Upper Canada in eighteen forty, and it's framed with representations of Oneida culture and its traditions. It'll be installed in the spring of the Heritage Center. We've uh changed the location uh on the building slightly. It was going to go on the north end. We decided to move it to the south end of the back wall, uh, which will allow for easier access by visitors, and it'll be completely signed uh to make it easy to find. Finally, with the help of a contract assistant, we are continuing to locate unprocessed material in the collection and other material that doesn't fit our mandate. A large portion of the fourth floor storage has been fully assessed, uh, with only the textile collection really to be reviewed there. New shelving has recently been installed in the space provided to us at the manor, and we are currently rearranging that part of the collection for easier access, as well as updating database entries as we go. As part of the storage orientation, we've sent a number of underutilized exhibit cases uh to other museums in the county, including the Marine Museum in Port Burwell, Sparta Church Museum, and the Edison Museum in Vienna. Uh, that concludes my report. Uh, Warden, I'd be happy to answer questions if there are any.
Well, thank you very much for that report, Mike, and uh thanks also to Counselor Henson and Jiguer for serving on that committee. We certainly appreciate it. Uh, does anyone have any questions for Mike at this time? Yes, Counselor Hens.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Uh, no question, just a comment. Uh, Counselors Jiguer and Hens have their names on the top of this, but I think everyone knows who's doing all the work.
My pleasure.
Perfect. Yes, Counselor Jiguer.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and the comment I want to add is, again, congratulate uh you and the staff and all the volunteers. You can see how they establish targets, so they do a very good job of doing that. And not only they establish targets, but they exceed their targets. Um, it's it's amazing to see what a small group of very dedicated people can do. So, well done.
Thank you very much.
Okay, anyone else? Yes, Counselor Cocket.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Just a a simple question. I think I'm, first of all, I'm pleased to see that the Oneida Nation mural is uh going to take place uh soon. Is there any is there any appetite for making uh, I guess, posters of this particular mural, which depicts the Oneida history for this area? It seems like a uh something that a lot of people would be interested in acquiring.
That's that's an excellent suggestion. I'll certainly consider that. Very good. Thank you.
Seeing no other questions. Uh, Mike, I understand that uh this is your final annual report.
It is. I'm sorry to say, it is my final report.
I want to take the opportunity to congratulate you for the many years that you've spent with us and uh, you know, look forward to your future and best of luck overall. I wonder if counsel might express that uh with just a round of applause for Mike.
Thank you very much. It's been a pleasure serving for you and representing the county at the museum.
And thank you. Jenna?
Be it resolved that the report titled Elgin County Museum, twenty-twenty-three annual report dated November twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-three, from Counselor Dominique Jiguer, Counselor Mike Kent, and the manager of museum and archives be received and filed.
Do we have a mover and secondor for that? Counselor Latham will move, and I believe Counselor Hens will second. All in favor? That is carried. Thank you. Moving on to section six-two, acting manager, planning, thirty-four T dash W E twenty-three zero one, applicant CJ D L Engineering, owner, Don West Construction. Good morning, Paul.
Good morning, Mr. Warden. How are you today?
Very well, thank you. Hopefully, things are well with you.
They are. Thank you. Um, so before council today, we have a draft plan of subdivision for a uh ten-lock residential subdivision located in West Lauren. These would be single detached lots that would front onto a new municipal road known as McLeod Court, and it's a cul-de-sac. Um, this plan of subdivision went through the standard um technical circulation um and 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 approvals process, as all other subdivisions do in the county. Um, we received uh standard comments and conditions from the agencies that we normally hear from, including the Conservation Authority, um, Bell Canada, um, and um Canada Post. Uh, before council today is a recommendation for approval, um, with a series of attached conditions of draft approval for your consideration. Um, staff don't have any concerns um with the proposed plan of subdivision. It has the um support of both uh West Elgin Council and staff, um, and also has county count, or pardon me, county staff support. Um, and the recommendation that we have before County Council uh today is for an approval. Um, as always, I'm certainly happy to answer any questions that council may have.
Thank you for that report, Paul. Does anyone have any questions or concerns with any part of the report? Seeing none. Jenna?
Be it resolved that the council of the Corporation of the County of Elgin grant draft plan approval to draft plan of subdivision by CJ D L Consulting Engineers on behalf of Don West Construction dated April fifth, twenty-twenty-three, and that staff be directed to provide notice of this decision, subject to the conditions of final approval in accordance with the requirements of the Planning Act.
Do we have a mover and secondor? Counselor Noble? And Counselor Latham, all in favor? And that's carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Section six-three, the manager of library services, Elgin County Library Membership and Circulation Policy Adoption. Good morning, Natalie.
Good morning, Mr. Warden, and through you to members of council. Uh, this report before you, um, for your consideration recommends the approval and adoption of a new library policy to govern membership and circulation services. This new policy combines existing patron registration and interlibrary loan policies, and also articulates current library circulation services as a policy governing these services to start currently exist. So this new policy guides important library matters such as decisions pertaining to library card creation and patron information confidentiality, inquiries from the public about borrowing items and materials used, and information about library fines and fees. Uh, as mentioned in this report, uh, a thorough review of policies and best practices from other library systems in Ontario was conducted in drafting this policy. This work was also uh done in collaboration with the support of library branch supervisors, Lea Ed Pisanu and Delene Van Zell, as well as our digital services librarian, Shanice Steele. The recommendations are before you, and I would be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you for that report, Natalie. Does anyone have any questions? Seeing none? Jenna, please.
Be it resolved that the report titled Elgin County Library Membership and Circulation Policy Adoption dated November twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-three, from the manager of library services be received and filed, and that the Elgin County Library Membership and Circulation Policy attached as appendix, as appendix A to the report titled Elgin County Library Membership and Circulation Policy Adoption dated November twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-three, be hereby adopted.
Do we have a mover and secondor for that? Deputy Warden Jones? Counselor Cocket? All in favor? That's carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on with six-four, the Accessibility Coordinator, the Elgin County and LMP's Joint Diversity Equity and Inclusion Plan, twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-six. Good morning, Sarah.
Good morning, Warden. Um, through you two members of council, uh, the report outlined uh is for the first ever joint sorry, diversity equity and inclusion plan that spans twenty-twenty-four to twenty-twenty-six, and it is for the County of Elgin and its local municipalities. The plan is not based on any legislative requirements. Uh, so unlike the joint multi-year accessibility plan that we have, um, this one was done as a means to align the county with best practices and ensure we are prioritizing DEI across the organization and our communities. The plan was based on examples of DEI plans, policies, guides from other municipalities in Ontario, and it was a collaborative effort with all the local municipal partners and all of the different departments at Elgin County. There was a survey that we sent out across Elgin County for feedback, which was incorporated into the plan, and it was also reviewed and approved by the Joint Accessibility Advisory Committee. So the report and the plan does go into more details, but I wanted to highlight a few things. Uh, we did include a decolonization and reconciliation section. We also have several sections that provide an overview of DEI, uh, why it matters, statistics and demographics, benefits of DEI in the workplace, and we do touch briefly on psychological health and safety. There is also a section on challenges and, of course, directives and how we would address said challenges, and then a section on DEI training. So the majority of the plan, however, is focused on the progress that has been made over time that pertains to DEI and as well as the goals that the different county departments and local municipalities have set out to achieve over the next two years. So I'm very excited about this, uh, and the many different goals and initiatives that are going to be undertaken to continue to enhance DEI across the county. Um, and I'm happy to answer any questions about the plan if you have any. Thank you so much.
But thank you very much for the report, Sarah. Does anyone have any questions? That's too easy. Okay, then we will have a motion.
Be it resolved that the report titled Elgin County and LMP's Joint Diversity Equity and Inclusion Plan, twenty-twenty-four to twenty-twenty-six, dated November twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-three, from the Accessibility Coordinator be received, filed, and approved.
Do we have a mover and secondor, please? Counselor Noble will move. Deputy Warden Jones will second. All in favor? And that is carried. Thank you very much, Sarah, and uh sad to see that uh this is Thursday will be your last day with the county, but thank you very much for your uh time with us. We certainly uh appreciate uh the fact that you've helped guide us through some of these uh uh, well, requirements and or enhancements to how we conduct business. So again, counsel, uh, if you'd like to express your appreciation.
Thank you so much. It's been an amazing opportunity to work here, so I really appreciate that, and I appreciate my time that I've been here for. So, thank you.
Thank you. Six-five, uh, manager procurement and risk, procurement activity report, third quarter, from July twenty-twenty-three to September thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three. Good morning, Mike.
Uh, good morning. Uh, thank you, Mr. Warden, uh, through you to county council. So this uh quarterly procurement activity report details the awards of contracts that were approved by directors valued at between fifteen thousand and two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. This report is for the period of July to September of this year. The uh list of the projects, the supplier, and the amounts are attached as appendix A. I can confirm that all contracts do comply with the county's procurement policy, and I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
But thank you for that report, uh, Mike. Does anyone have any questions, concerns? Okay.
Be it resolved that the report titled Procurement Activity Report, Q three, July first, twenty-twenty-three to September thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three, dated November twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-three, from the manager of procurement and risk be received and filed.
Do we have a mover and secondor, please? Counselor Hens? And Counselor Jiguer will second. All in favor? That is carried. Thank you. Section six-six, manager procurement risk, general insurance and risk management services program for twenty-twenty-four. Mike, again, please.
Perfect. Uh, thank you again, Mr. Warden, through you to county council. Uh, so this report provides details regarding the general insurance and risk management services for twenty-twenty-four. So Marsh Canada was selected through a competitive RFP process to provide services for a period of up to five years. This is the third year of the contract term. The proposed insurance premium cost for twenty-twenty-four is just over five hundred and seventy-three thousand, which is an eighteen point one percent increase from the twenty-twenty-three premium. So as noted in the report, and similar to last year, our insurer sure is stating that the increases are a result of property value increases, mandated inflation increases, and current market conditions. I do want to point out um that the twenty-twenty-three annual premium amount noted in this report does not include the additional cost for the property insurance for the Terrace Lodge redevelopment. So that amount, which was approximately forty thousand dollars of the twenty-twenty-four increase, or is roughly eight point three percent. So therefore, the actual market increase for twenty-twenty-four is approximately nine point eight percent. So at this time, it's not recommended that the county go to the uh go to market. We are recommending renewal of this insurance program for a one-year term. The two staff recommendations are before you, and I would be pleased to answer any questions.
Thank you for that report, Mike. Uh, any questions? I hate to say it, but it is what it is. It's the cost of doing business in this environment. Okay, thank you. Thanks again for the report, uh, Mike.
Be it resolved that the General Insurance and Risk Management Services Program proposed by Marsh Canada Limited, Marsh be approved at the annual premium cost of five hundred seventy-three thousand nine hundred and thirty-one dollars plus taxes, commencing December fifteenth, twenty-twenty-three, and expiring on December fifteenth, twenty-twenty-four, and that the manager of procurement and risk and director of financial services treasurer be authorized to renew the policy.
Do we have a mover and secondor for that? Deputy Warden Jones and Counselor Latham will second. All in favor? Any opposed? That's carried. We could all oppose it, but. Brings us to six-seven, manager of administrative services, deputy clerk, regarding the twenty-twenty-four county council meeting schedule. Jenna, please.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Through you to members of council. The purpose of this report is to seek council's approval for the schedule of county council meetings for twenty-twenty-four. Pursuant to council's procedural bylaw, council meets every second and fourth Tuesday of the month. However, due to conflicts with twenty-twenty-four conferences, suggestions for alternate meeting dates in January and April are reflected in the draft schedule. Once approved by council, the meeting schedule be will be shared with Elgin's local municipal partner councils, posted on the county website and made available at the county's administration office. With that, I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
And thank you for that report, Jenna. Does anyone have any concerns or questions? Okay.
Be it resolved that the report titled twenty-twenty-four County Council Meeting Schedule dated November twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-three, from the manager of administrative services deputy clerk be received and filed, and that the twenty-twenty-four County Council Meeting Schedule be approved as presented, and that notice of the twenty-twenty-four schedule of county council meetings and any special meetings outside of the adopted schedule of regular meetings of council be made available from the municipal office and posted on the county's website in accordance with Elgin County Council's procedural bylaw.
Mover and secondor, please. Counselor Widner will move. Counselor Jiguer will second. All in favor? And that's carried. Six-eight, Director of Legal Services, indemnification bylaw. Good morning, Nick.
Good morning, Warden. Good morning, all of council. Um, so this is the first of uh two reports and bylaws that I'm bringing before you today um that uh have been sort of through a fairly large iterative process and have been uh quite a bit of work. There are two kinds of bylaws that you commonly see in municipalities and are highly recommended by the legal department. So this first one is the indemnification bylaw, and what it effectively does uh is speaks to the county's responsibilities as well as the employee's responsibilities or the or the limits of the county's responsibility when legal proceedings are commenced against folks that are either employees, volunteers uh or officers of the county or members of council or its local local board. So it is conceivable uh when people are doing their regular duties on behalf of the county, whether that's a member of council or its staff, that a legal proceeding could be commenced against them personally. So so if you think of a lawsuit, it would say the corporation of County Elgin, but then it'd also say, you know, Nicholas Loeb i- in my own personal name. you know, Nicholas Loeb, i- in my own personal name. Our, our insurance policies already account for that. So we have insurance, uh, that covers claims against our employees. That's the nature of, uh, commercial insurance. Um, what this indemnification bylaw does is different than that. So this doesn't affect any of what I will describe as the normal course of a legal proceeding, uh, that is taken care of by our insurer. But what it does is catch all of the gaps. So it deals with what happens with the sub deductible amount. It deals with what happens if someone is named in a type of proceeding, uh, that is not insurable for whatever reason. And it sets the control that the county would have over those things, uh, the criteria that need to be met for someone to be eligible, and then also sets limits. So if someone uh, is engaged in a criminal activity by, for example, oh, no, sorry. Uh, great, we're sorry, criminal activity obviously is exempted, but associated with their duties as well. So, um, it, you know, if there was something that was a bad faith, uh, or dishonest, um, non-performance of duties, then there are limits on that. And so this is recommended, uh, for the reasons that are set out in the reports. I have a bullet point list on, on what the benefits are. And not having one, which is sort of the current situation the county is in, so this isn't replacing an older version. This is a new bylaw that's being presented. Um, it leads to confusion and in a worst case scenario, sort of litigation by someone who's been put into a legal proceeding and the county is not, uh, stepping in as the employer, uh, pursuant to what its common law responsibilities may be. And then that employee is forced to go out of pocket to compel the county into a position where it, it should be doing its duty as its employer. Secondly, when legal proceedings are commenced, they often have short timelines for filing either a response or defense. And so absent an indemnification bylaw, uh, staff would have to come quickly to council, potentially substantial council meeting and put all of the facts to council to then request indemnification for that person. Um, and then lastly, it's also just sort of this takes, uh, the pressure cooker nature of making those decisions, um, and makes it a bit easier. So in a situation where legal proceeding is commenced, you're then faced with a specific scenario where you have to make a decision right then about indemnification. This sets out a default indemnification subject to the extent and criteria that are in there. So it is, um, highly recommended. Uh, I venture to say that most municipalities do have them, certainly all of the larger ones. Um, and it's, uh, something that's recommended to give staff comfort in terms of performing their duties. Uh, and then, you know, also the corporate benefit is setting out all of the clear protocols, controls over the legal proceedings that are set out in the bylaw, uh, and, um, the limits of what the indemnification is. So I'm happy to answer any specific questions you may have, but that is the broad outlines of what, what this indemnification bylaw is.
All right. Thank you very much for that report, Nick. Excuse me, um, Counsel, uh, Deputy Warden Jones, do you have some questions?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Warden, and, and I do agree with what, uh, was being presented. I guess, uh, my concern is it's a very significant bylaw. And generally, a bylaw like this would be read a first, second time and read a third time at a subsequent meeting. I just, I think this is possibly rushing it. Just my opinion.
Well, thank you for those comments, uh, Deputy Warden, um. I would, uh, I would ask the C A O, uh, what are your thoughts on this? Is there any concerns with, uh, council that chose to defer this until a future meeting? For consideration.
Thank you, Worship. Uh, really, it's a comfort of council. I, I don't see, um, a downside of moving it ahead today. I don't think there's any risk factor. Uh, the risk has been the fact that we have not had an indemnification bylaw, and I, to be frank, I was, I was, uh, surprised and concerned when we didn't. So I was happy, uh, Mr. Low brought this forward, but, um, if council's wishes, uh, to, you know, table it today, or basically, you know, read first, first and second bylaw, you could come back again in two weeks. That's not a problem. It's well within the purview of council. So, uh, I'd ask if Mr. Lowe has any other comments on that regard, but uh, I don't see a major concern either. It's just that the faster this gets put in place, the faster each of you have more protection, which I think is, uh, warranted. Thank you.
Okay. Any additional comments, questions, uh, Counselor Jiguer?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Warden. Um, I, I agree. This is a brand new, uh, bylaw. So I think unless there's like an emergency, um, I think it would be wise to take our time. We have committee of the whole exactly for that. So we can discuss, we can ask questions. This is a very short turnaround time in a couple of days to, um, research this. Um, so, for example, I know at my end, um, I had questions around even volunteers. I just quickly looking around other municipalities, it's not a common um, inclusion, and I find it quite broad. And, uh, even though there's an attempt to define it, but, um, I would like more information on that and why, why we would do that and examples of cases. Um, if there's case law or, um, so I, because I want to know how broad this risk is that we're taking on and how much liability we're taking on. Uh, I think I picked up on eligible person as the integrity commissioner. So, uh, that surprised me that why, I mean, I think we're contracting out the integrity commissioner, and I would assume that they would have their own. Um, so I, I, I didn't find that again, not a lot of time to do a research, but other municipalities, it doesn't seem to be a common clause. And, um, the same with the, how to determine the eligibility. So there's different practices from what I can tell out there. Sometimes it's a committee. Uh, I think what we're proposing here is the C A O. Um, if there's question on of eligibility, I think it's saying that it's to be determined by the C A O and, um, Director of, uh, Legal Services. Well, what if those two individuals are involved? What if those two individuals disagree? So we have, it, it says and. So there are quite a few things. And, and again, um, there are other practices and there are flaws in I guess what I'm saying is this, if you, uh, look at other municipalities who've implemented this and they've had to come back to clean up some of the things that went wrong. And, um, so I would like to take our time and, um, encourage everybody to ask questions. I will forward, uh, my questions and perhaps um, it would be good to have a follow-up report before going to actual, the actual bylaw resolution. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. Counselor Noble.
Through you, Mr. Warden. I guess my other question too, with some of what Counselors Jiguer brought up, um, what if it's a past employee or a past council member? Um, and, uh, you have people on a new board that may or may not choose to save money and not support that past person. Um, that's my other question. Thank you.
Okay. Question to you, Nick, is it going to provide a challenge for you to, uh, bring back a little additional information or analysis and, uh?
No, that would be fun. Um, I'd welcome any questions that you have if, uh, if you have moments to review the bylaw. Um, I can answer some of the questions that have come up right now that the most straightforward one is the integrity commissioner is indemnified by the statute by the municipal act. So it already exists. So I do acknowledge you don't see it in every bylaw depend, especially depending when they're passed compared to when that provision municipal act came in. We did it just to show it can form. So it's all in one place. But if it wasn't there, it's municipal indemnification in any event. Um, and certainly those are great questions about, uh, volunteers, uh, about the eligibility piece and who would make a determination. Um, and then, uh, the past employee question. So this does indemnify past employees or past members of council or local board, um, provided that what the underlying premise of the legal proceeding is occurred in accordance with those duties. So the, the fact that you just happen to be a past member of council doesn't mean that you get to have indemnification, is that you were subjected to a legal proceeding about something that happened then, that which is the same way that sort of our insurance works, right? So if you were the person making the decision at the time and you're sued about it, then our insurance ends up covering you. This is the same idea. Um, but certainly i- if there's sort of more detailed questions on what that looks like, I'm happy to follow up with all of that. And I'd be pleased to bring a report. The, the only thing I'd note in terms of timing is because our next council meeting is, uh, next Wednesday as opposed to the two weeks in between with the Warden's uh, election being next Tuesday, th- this follow-up report would then likely come in January rather than next week because I right, just the timing of being able to produce the report. So you can expect at the January ninth meeting.
Okay. I'm going to look around the room and see if there's consensus. If no one is in a big rush, uh, we could still read the bylaw the second time, just hold off on passing the third. Kind of puts a signal out there that, uh, we're interested, but we haven't committed ourselves. If that works for people. I'm seeing some nods. Okay. I'll let Jenna get some reading around here. Okay, while there's some, uh, wordsmithing going on here, um, I would encourage, uh, members of council that, uh, if you have any direct questions or concerns, uh, in the meantime, before this is brought back to us, uh, take opportunity and communicate them with the Director of Legal Services. Uh, we've got a little time. And, uh, that could be reflected back in this report. Okay, Jenna.
Be it resolved that the report titled Delegation of Authority Bylaw dated, oh, sorry, wrong one. Be it resolved that the report titled Indemnification Bylaw dated November twenty eighth, twenty twenty three from the Director of Legal Services be received and filed, and that the Director of Legal Services be directed to provide more information to County Council at the January ninth, twenty twenty four meeting.
We have a mover and secondor on that. Counselor Jiguer and Counselor Noble. All in favor? Okay, that's carried. Moving on to six nine, Director of Legal Services, Delegation of Authority Bylaw. Nick, please.
Thank you, Warden. And so this is the second bylaw. Um, so this is again, uh, sort of a comprehensive bylaw that's being brought before you, um, to, uh, conform to sort of what I describe as common municipal practices. Uh, and beyond that, a bylaw like this, or at least policies dealing with the delegation of authority within a municipality is required by section two seventy of the municipal act. And we don't have a comprehensive delegation of authority bylaw here. So this is again, a new bylaw that is not replacing other ones. Um, but it is drawing together a number of authorities that are dealt with desperately through other mechanisms, uh, at the county. Um, and so some of those are established by practice. Some of those are in, uh, things like uh, like the Director of Engineering, by way of example, issues road permits, which is part of the permitting system that the county has put up. But this clarifies the nature and extent of, of what that delegated authority looks like. So in terms of the process of how this came about, um, essentially I met with each of the directors as well as the C A O to understand what kind of discretionary decision-making they perform, what kind of documents they, uh, interact with in their work, uh, and what kind of things they think um, required it be essentially delegation from council and would have covered in this bylaw. I then generated a draft report following each of those meetings, uh, which are done individually. And then we brought that through to the executive leadership team. We discussed it as a group at that point. There was further feedback that I got in writing from various directors, and that's been addressed, uh, in this follow-up draft that is now before council. Hmm, so the reason is strongly recommended is first and foremost, uh, because of the statutory requirement under section two seventy to have a, a policy related to the delegation of authority. So this is something that the county should have, uh, in place. Um, the second one is, uh, that officers, employees of the county will have clarity on the nature, extent and parameters of their discretionary exercise of authority. Uh, so one of the uh, concepts that came through in my various meetings with directors was that a lot of questions arise about the nature of the authority that's delegated to them and what should go to council and what shouldn't. Um, and some of those are about fairly routine things. And then inherent in the bylaw, because this is one of the other significant values of the bylaw, is, uh, when authority is exercised, uh, it creates a series of checks and balances within administration um, that essentially requires folks to consult with each other on their respective areas of professional expertise. So we have, we have a great team at the senior leadership level, and we do a good job of checking with each other. So I check the finance, about money issues, I check with the C A O about uh, the variety of things that go before C A O, and people come to me about legal things. But this actually makes it a requirement in order to, uh, hit that use of authority to make sure that we're doing that kind of thing, uh, in certain instances. The other reason is there's actually a fair number of documents, uh, that we sign um, that require some proof of the delegated authority, uh, to enter into them. So an obvious example is, uh, transfer payment agreements that we get from the province on Terry, Terry over various programs, uh, requiring their schedules demonstration of signing authority. And the only way we do that right now is go back to the resolutions and confirming bylaws passed by council to authorize the execution of the agreements. And this would provide an opportunity, like it's, it's an instrument that we can just forward anytime we have to demonstrate the delegated authority to make a decision like this. So that's the nature of the bylaw. The other things I just wanted to highlight are, um, one, the monetary amounts that you see in there, uh, especially in the first section that's provided to all directors, that's already in conformance with your, uh, procurement bylaw, which is bylaw twenty dash oh seven. And so there's no change to the monetary delegation of authority that is flowing through this. Um, and in order to change that, you'd have to change both bylaws essentially. The other monetary items, by way of example, there's delegated authority to the Director of Legal Services in conjunction with others to settle things, settle legal proceedings under the amount of thirty five thousand, provided there's an approved budget, uh, in a reserve for legal settlements. Uh, the reason that it's thirty five thousand is that that's the jurisdiction of the small claims court. So, so if we end up being sued for nine hundred dollars, by way of example, or twenty nine thousand dollars, um, that's the jurisdiction of small claims court. And given the, the other monetary authority of director levels going up to a hundred and fifty thousand for procurement of services, that's the kind of thing that I recommend you delegate down to staff to deal with, so it doesn't have to come to council, so that effective and efficient settlements can be made. So, so tho- those other monetary values that are not purchase of services, um, all have a rationale similar to that one in terms of, uh, there, there's a reason for the amount underpinning, uh, the suggested recommendation. And then the, the other two caveats are the planning services delegation of authority was just updated in June of this year in a separate bylaw. And it's not currently contained in here. The reason for that is anticipated through the budget approval process and moving into twenty twenty four that there may be a transition of the nature of planning services delivery at the county. And, uh, so that hasn't been included in here because that will likely require input of an incoming C A O and, and potentially depending on council's consideration of various budget implications, a director of planning services. So we're, we're just leaving that. And then the second one is the human resources policies are not comprehensively dealt with in here because our H R policy manual has both delegations of authority that may ultimately arrive in, uh, in this bylaw during further amendment. Um, but there's also a significant number of policies that should remain in a policy manual rather than a delegation of authority bylaw. And so it'll be sort of disaggregating which, which of those should be in which, uh, area. And on that note, it is very common for bylaws like this to be routinely amended. So anytime you have an organizational structure changed, they are amended. Um, just sort of lessons learned, finding efficiencies, uh, realizing that something else should or shouldn't be delegated is a routine reason to come back and amend these. So my, my recommendation is that this is, uh, approved today. I know it's another comprehensive and large, uh, bylaw. But given that it's required by the municipal act and that it provides a lot of clarity to staff, my recommendation is to, is to pass it today. Um, and if it requires amendment through input from the incoming C A O or, or from some near-term changes that occur, we will bring it back for an amendment at that point. And, uh, subject any questions that might, my presentation.
All right, Nick. Thank you very much for that, uh, report. Uh, it is comprehensive. Absolutely. It's, uh, big. Don?
Thank you, Worship. Uh, in reading the bylaw and the way Nick was just describing it, it clearly sets out things that are delegated. The, the other thing I just want to emphasize for council, one, it represents current practices, but two, what this bylaw clearly does is also it sets limits as to when you're required to come back to county council or when you're required to consult someone else. So I, I think the, the, the team has done a good job in trying to make sure not only are you recognizing what the current practice is, but also making sure that there's a check and balance in the system so that we have some additional safeguards, including the ultimate safeguard of coming back to county council for approvals over certain amounts or in certain circumstances. And I think, you know, we've had some discussions over the last several months about where we didn't have enough checks and balances in the system. And I think the And I think the reading through that, it gives you uh an understanding that there has been a conscious effort to try and do that. So it's it's setting the limits as well as providing a delegated authority to do things. It's saying when you can't do things without approvals. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for that. Uh, thank you. Uh, Counselor Sloan.
Uh, through you, Warden. Thanks very much. Couple of points. Um, number one, Mr. Loeb refers to how effective settlements can be made um and the change to thirty five thousand dollars. And to your point, um, Dawn about um, checks and balances. Currently, this document has the Director of Legal Services and the C A O jointly um could settle up to a hundred thousand dollars and council would only be over a hundred thousand. That financial authority to me has a bit of, it raises a bit of a concern. Um, and I just wanted to give an idea or get an understanding of why those numbers would be, would be suggested when um, a current pro- in our current process, the council would have um, far more engagement on what I would consider to be files of substance that we were looking at uh settling. Thank you.
Nick, thank you for the question, Counselor Sloan. Yep, so the uh, the jurisdiction of small claims court is the one that I first flagged and explained. And so you're the next bullet point down in that section um has the sorry, as you've described already, has the Director of Legal Services and C A O jointly up to a hundred thousand, provided that the amount is within an approved budget for legal settlements. So different budget lines uh have like, like account for the potential for legal proceedings. And then we have a reserve for legal settlements broadly speaking as well to the county. So this, this does require that council sort of uh appropriated the funds through the budget approval process that are then being expanded through a settlement like this. Um, the reason for a hundred thousand uh i- is that that is uh, in the grand scheme of legal proceedings, um, what I would describe as a reasonably uh routine amount. So, so it used to be uh, the maximum amount that you could go to under what's called the simplified rules in this, in the Superior Court of Justice. That they've actually changed that recognizing uh that legal settlements are much higher nowadays. So I think for five years now, simplified rules has actually been up to two hundred thousand. Recognizing how significant, significant that would be, I sort of left it at what used to be the simplified rules cap of a hundred thousand. So tha- that's why a hundred thousand was put in there. Um, a- and then again, the, the other thought process there was directors are already entrusted with uh sort of purchasing authorities within their approved budgets of up to a hundred and fifty thousand before they come to council, provided they follow the normal uh procurement policies. So, so this was reflective of a level that council already uh has trust in their senior leadership for in terms of uh operating within their approved budgets uh in their professional expertise. So, so that was the rationale for it, but uh, certainly council can amend that number if they wish to.
All right. Thank you for that. Any additional questions? Follow up? Counselor Zegar.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Um, yeah, so just as per my previous comments, just generally speaking, I prefer as a practice that we don't introduce a, a comprehensive, brand-new bylaw and try to pass it the same day. I recognize the urgency and perhaps this one doesn't have to wait till January, but could be next week, just so there's time to digest. Um, because I, I have a couple of questions as well and would like more time to um look into it. You know, the comment about the hundred thousand dollars is, is a good one that needs to be um thought through. When we pre-approve uh staff with a hundred thousand, it's through a budget process. So the budget has gone through council. So it's kind of a pre-approval. This would, this is a little bit different. It's not something that you necessarily budget for. So I, I could see wanting to think that through further. Um, little things also. Uh, there are different places where we use and. So for example, the C A O and the director and other places where we use and/or. And so if we're seeking clarity, I, I certainly favor me. I wouldn't want to say, so does N mean always end? And this N or actually just mean or? So which, which one is it? And um, I was, my last question is the Director of I T. Do we have that position at the moment? Because this current bylaw uh does delegate to the Director of I T in a, in a few places. So hence those questions and the, the necessary, I think, time to just polish further.
Don, please.
Thank you. I, I think the bulk of the comment was give, give us at least another week or it could be more to look at it. So completely within council's discretion, completely respect that. Um, just for clarity's sake, uh, Jennifer uh, is currently the Acting Director of I T Services. It'll be up to our new C A O when they're appointed to sit down and reflect on what the current um structure of the organization is like and then to have that discussion with council. But uh Jennifer, right now, has been serving in that role since I came to council in July and had that discussion with you.
Okay. Are there any other questions? Yeah, Counselor Noble.
Through you, Mr. Warden. I, I think with the size of our budget, the hundred thousand might be a hard, hard uh appetite for this council um to maybe consider just being able to write off a hundred thousand without it coming to council.
Okay. Would council be interested then in just giving a little more time for reflection and bringing this back at the next meeting? Oh, Andrew, please.
Counselor.
Thank you, Warden. Could I make a motion that this be put off uh, like the other bylaw till the January meeting, please?
Well, there's a motion or there's a mover on the floor, Jenna. Can you uh incorporate that? Yes.
Be it resolved that the report titled delegation of authority by law dated November twenty eighth, twenty twenty three from the Director of Legal Services be received and filed. And that the Director of Legal Services be directed to provide more information to County Council at the January ninth, twenty twenty four meeting.
Okay, been moved by Counselor Sloan. Anyone interested in seconding? Counselor Widner? All in favor? Okay, that is carried. Thank you. Item seven, council correspondence. I don't believe we have any. Which brings us to item number eight, other business statements increased by members. Counselor Widner.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Warden. Just had a question brought to me there a while ago last week. Actually, Malahide had a rezoning and if you read the written report and you actually went and looked at the property, it'd be two different things. You just didn't. Anyway, we passed it on our end, but I was talking to some land division members and I was told, I don't know if it's true or not, they're not allowed to go on site and look at these properties. That's ridiculous, in my opinion. These people spend a lot of money trying to get these things done. And then nobody can actually go and look and make their mind up. So I don't know why that happened or can it be changed or just an inquiry. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for that, uh, Counselor Widner. Don, you and I have spoken about this, so.
Thank you. Um, they actually do have the opportunity. There is there was, I, I will admit to some confusing language in the budget, but I did go back and check on it after I'd had the concern raised uh with me with, by the warden. And um, I think it says something on the order of like seven staff hours have been included in the budget to an investigation. Anyway, the monies are available in the budget. I've spoken to Paul Clark, who provides staff support to the, the piece. Um, there's not a lot of money because the majority of the uh considerations done by the land and division committee actually are relatively routine and it wouldn't warrant someone going out and, you know, having additional expense. But if there's, if there's something that um they would like to go out of this particularly, then what I would suggest is that they just have that conversation with the chair or with the uh uh, individual, like we have to make sure that there's some constraints on the budget because we don't have a lot of money budget and that's council's decision in a few weeks as to whether you want to put more money there. But there is certainly money that would afford for the number of occurrences that that's come up in the last year or two. Uh, that there's money for the, for them to go get paid for mileage to, to go and have the inspection. So that is, it is permitted now. Paul Clark was already expecting that people knew that they could do that. Uh, there was not a surprise. So uh, again, some miscommunication, but the monies are available. They can do that. I just, uh, I'll have to work with Paul and the team to make sure that it's a clear clearly communicated to the members of the committee as to what they should do if they want to go and do an inspection.
Okay, Deputy Warden Jones.
Just to make sure that it's sort of where we have within budget constraints, but it's, it's permitted.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Uh, yeah, this was brought forward to me by our representative for Southold. Um, went back and uh, a chat with a, a former uh land division rep from our area. And uh, at that time, it was expected that the, a rep from that area would go out and look at it, but it was already part of understanding was that was part of my pay that I'm getting already and wasn't an over and above. It was just part of the job. Um, from his perspective, anyway, he said he never got any extra money for going out and looking at the site. It was just, uh, I'm getting paid per meeting and that's part of the pay package.
But thank you for that, uh, Deputy Warden. My understanding was that there might be a mileage factor, mileage. Uh, in conversations with uh another member of the land division committee has suggested to me that uh through conferences and things that they attend, though it is not perhaps a strict legal requirement, it's still highly recommended that that be a practice. And I agree that in the past, uh, that's what happened. The local reps went, viewed, and then they could report back to the land division committee after something uh that isn't readily visible through a G I S map or, or something. So they can, they put some context to it. And that was the concern. So whether it was a miscommunication or whether it was a budgetary restraint, I wasn't there. I can't tell you. So I think if uh land division has the opportunity to, can do this, then uh I think it may uh ease some of the concern. And I think that's the messaging I'm getting. Okay? Counselor Widner?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Warden. There seems to be some confusion with some of the land division members because they, I was told by two, they're not allowed to do this. So maybe that should be clarified on their end and figure out a solution to this.
I'll, I'll work with Nicholas and Paul Clark to make sure that there's a, a message that can be delivered through the chair of the committee to clarify what the process is and what the expectations would be. So yeah, thank you. Thank you for raising issue.
Yes, thank you very much for that. Anyone else have any statements? Counselor Zegar?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Warden. I just want to remind everybody that today is Giving Tuesday. And so all the money that you saved on Black Friday sales and Cyber Monday should go to Terrace Lodge. So on Giving Tuesday, Terrace Lodge is the best cause that um you could direct all those savings towards. So donate to terracelodge.ca. Thank you.
Very well done.
And a shout out to uh the warden. Also, I want to acknowledge the donation that uh you personally made um at the dinner. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Anyone else? Okay, uh, a couple of things I want to uh bring up. Uh, of course, we are into that festive holiday season. We've already uh seen uh four parades uh within our county of Elgin already go by. And I know I've had an opportunity to participate in a couple of them. I just want to encourage you, if you have opportunity to visit other jurisdictions within Elgin and take part in their parades, I encourage you to do it. It is a lot of fun. We've got a couple coming up this weekend. Uh, Springfield, I believe, is on Saturday at one. Port Burwell is a nighttime parade at six. Might be chilly down on the lake. It was chilly in the, in the you know, in Port Stanley the other night, but it was a good parade. Um, but uh, the, the C A O had published in his uh weekly report, the schedule, and uh, so if you have opportunity, give it a shot and uh enjoy it. Yeah. Deputy Warden Jones.
Thank you. Uh, Southold's on Sunday.
It's on Sunday.
Foot Fingal, Main Street.
Yeah, perfect. Okay.
Excuse me, Warden?
Counselor Sloan.
Sorry to interrupt, Warden, but through you, uh, Bell Monsters on Sunday evening.
Yep, I see that. Six P M. Perfect. I don't know if I can bounce that one in. I've got a son's birthday that day. That takes priority. Yeah. Perfect. Before we take a quick break, uh, I just want to also mention, uh, I want to express my gratitude and thankfulness uh to the support of council for this past year. It isn't the year I envisioned going into it. We've had challenges, but together we've overcome a lot of those challenges. We're continuing to work forward. And so, thank you. Okay? Moving on to section nine. And then we'll take a quick break.
Be it resolved that we do now proceed into closed meeting session in accordance with the Municipal Act to discuss the following matters under Municipal Act, section two thirty nine two. Closed meeting item number one, November fourteenth, twenty twenty three, closed meeting minutes. Closed meeting item number two, human resources update, section two thirty nine two D. Closed meeting item number three, I T update, section two thirty nine two A. And closed meeting item number four, boundary adjustment matter update, section two thirty nine two H.
Mover and seconder, please. Counselor Noble and Counselor Widner will second. All in favor? That's carried. Let's take a quick break. We're good. Okay, welcome back. Motion to rise and report?
Be it resolved that we do now rise and report.
Mover and seconder, please. Counselor Noble and I believe Counselor Crockett will second. All in favor? That's carried. Closed meeting item number.
Meeting minutes of the meeting held opted.
Mover and seconder, please. Counselor Latham and Deputy Warden Jones, all in favor? That's carried. Thank you. Closed meeting item number two.
Be it resolved that the confidential report from the Director of Human Resources be received for information?
Mover and seconder, please. Counselor Noble, Counselor Zegar will second. All in favor? That's carried. Closed meeting item number three.
Be it resolved that the confidential report from the Director of Financial Services Treasurer be received for information?
Counsel, Counselor Noble will move and Deputy Warden Jones will second. All in favor? That's carried. Thank you. And closed meeting item number four.
Be it resolved that the confidential report from the Director of Legal Services be received for information and that staff proceed as directed?
Mover and seconder, please. Counselor Widner and Counselor Noble will second. All in favor? That's carried. Thank you. Motion to adopt recommendations from the committee of the whole?
Be it resolved that we do now adopt recommendations of the committee of the whole?
Mover and seconder, Counsel, Deputy Warden Jones. Uh, Counselor Noble, all in favor? Consideration of the bylaws.
Be it a first, second and third read of bylaw num- no, sorry. Be it a first and second read of bylaw number twenty three dash forty three being a bylaw to provide for the indemnity and defense of members of council, members of local boards, employees and volunteers of the county against loss or liability incurred while acting on behalf of the county.
Mover and seconder? Okay, Deputy Warden Jones. Uh, Counselor Hints? All in favor? That's carried. Thank you. Next.
Be it a first and second read of bylaw number twenty three dash forty four being a bylaw to delegate authority to officers and employees of the Corporation of the County of Elgin?
Mover and seconder, please. Counselor Latham? And Counselor Noble? All in favor? Yeah, that's carried. And the confirmation bylaw?
Be it a first, second and third read of bylaw number twenty three dash forty five being a bylaw to confirm proceedings of the Municipal Council of the Corporation of the County of Elgin at the November twenty eighth, twenty twenty three meeting?
Mover and seconder, please? Counselor Hints? Deputy Warden Jones? All in favor? Okay, that's carried and the adjournment.
Be it resolved that we do now adjourn at twelve oh five P M to meet again on December fifth, twenty twenty three at seven o'clock P M?
Counselor Widner. And it looks like Counselor Crockett will second that. All in favor? And that is carried. Thank you for uh joining us this morning and uh have a great day.